Yeah.
Uh, I think.
We're gonna withhold this, like, a dollar fifty for my.
But some other standards.
It's unusual.
Yeah.
The whole thing is unusual.
When they did wrong, that was the all you.
Yeah, and here's the thing is, I just did that over five years. And I'm sure. And I'm sure. Okay, thank you. And you are. And I'm sure you are.
You are.
Right.
Terrible traffic.
He may have done.
Oh, wow.
Possible. What play?
Eighty-two and two seventy-one.
She said one turn left on these.
Two seventy-one in Commons.
Yeah.
I feel you.
Your PTOE stand on that?
People.
Yeah.
People just bump them.
Yeah. Do you think so? Yeah.
I was just thinking that the other day. Yeah. Should be a double.
Yeah, I think it should be. Feels like it would.
There's not as much.
Well, I would be really happy if that was there.
Yeah.
We have consensus. Let's go tweet the symbol.
Well, or you get a semi that gets in the go straight lane and makes a left. Because he can't make that turn.
Well, they put a sign there. I'm sure they will all obey it, right?
It's like they are not like you.
Oh, yeah.
It does seem like it would be a candidate for it, though.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I was getting off there.
Yeah, it gets, like I was telling you, it gets the heaviest of the three directions is the left.
Probably interchange operations. They just about won their last, so. The rest of the year.
We need nine hours.
We might need one.
Interchange operations.
Bob, get a D.O. cut.
I'm sorry, what's that?
What?
Is that what it's called?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, if he's asleep, probably. I know him.
It's like, you know, interchange of stations that you lose.
Oh, I got.
I think GPD, you're talking to them. I knew GPD did that work. That was. I didn't think it was.
No, URS was the B engineer.
Oh, did they?
For that two seventy-one eighty-two project.
I remember.
Yeah.
GPD did the traffic study for eighty-two phase three. Remember that?
I really thought it was GPD. The best traffic engineer in the whole state has signed on about it yet.
That's the problem. There you go.
Yeah, I did send that reminder out to everybody.
How's it going? Okay.
Okay.
Call it ordered. Last one's call it ordered, the Mass Denny Planning Commission public hearing for September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Can we get a roll call?
Yep, Mr. Westbrook.
Here.
Mr. Siobhan.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Wallenhorst.
Here.
All right, first item is conditional use to build an oversized garage at eighty-nine seventy-three North Bedford Road. I feel silly asking, but I'll do it for the record. Anyone here to speak to this subject?
No.
Nobody in the room. There is no one in the room. All right. Second issue is conditional use for a dental office in a B two community shopping district. Is there anyone to speak to this issue? There is no one here. And we're already three minutes past the official starting time, so I don't think anyone's gonna speak for these. Entertaining motion to close the public hearing. All right, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Prose.
All right.
We've got a couple of minutes. Would you, would you guys rather discuss the miscellaneous now, since we have a couple of minutes about the digital?
Could do that.
No, it's just miscellaneous. It's just how you guys want it handled.
Brian's probably.
You should open your meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because otherwise it's a, it really affects.
It's sunshine.
Okay.
We'll wait.
Anyway, let's start with that.
That's fine.
Okay, so.
But you could open your meeting if you go too early.
Original plan.
Reversal.
Obviously, they're being installed. And then replace.
Why is it the way?
It'll be a total disaster. We wrote the letter, sent out the letters, and everyone will be out of their drive. But now.
Just a reference.
But just your year.
Oh, all right. Not just.
And then there's.
Close. Why don't we just replace it? And.
I was gonna ask.
Your, your timing that you're out of your driveway goes from three days into.
Like, I tried to think.
Almost. A little couple of hours, I guess. They pull the lights out of the door, but once they finish. Well, that's like, of course, you can drive it from office, you know, because they have a cure.
All of the city's website.
Part of it. But it's all on one. They're a different kind. So that's what it was. They would have been using this twenty-four hours. Try to be. Well, I see you. You know, prep time. So. If that take, if you got. Save that whole bunch of things. You're no worse off. In fact, they said, maybe you're a little better off because money's down.
And if they did up the, is this gonna be it? Boundary. Marcus. The spin last. Yeah, this is it.
Oh, his property.
Oh, and you're gonna have to replace.
They'll put them back. They shouldn't touch the property.
Yeah. Well, based on where they got the states.
Mm-hmm.
And how big is why are they?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a pretty true thing.
I hadn't seen the water line marked. They've marked the street where they're gonna come.
Okay.
So I said.
I think you might compute not pretty near.
You were. As a. Use. So you have. On your front.
They don't provide us with.
And you're pretty close.
And there's references. Where the state is. That's what we have. And things.
Possibly, I mean, I, I have, I think sometimes the state will not own the actual patient. It would be like combined. Tentative. Oh, and from. This way as. Probably, yeah, would have to be, because you can't put the state on the.
That's where that was.
The other side, because you'd be driving the state. Yeah. My job is.
You all have them further down. That's the number stuff.
Probably. Yeah, but like I say, I didn't want to help them. Under me, what's actually. Um, but basically, the. You like to be in the same. The lines.
So that's where they. Drive way.
Oh, okay. Okay. To be.
Didn't I give them to you? Or I think. Right?
Yeah. Property corner.
I think I sent them all an email.
It shouldn't be working. Over.
Yeah. Yeah. Did I say that email that I, they were gonna bring a hard copy? I think so. I think they're.
Make a mistake. Um, I got.
It was very short.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, I know that in that whole scheme of. There is. Compared with. All fresh here. There is. One, two, three, four, five. There's five.
Right.
Then. Well, we operate.
Oh, okay.
Street. They, even though they never had targets, years ago when they bought. Property.
Okay.
So the neighbor. She goes in a river. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Pouring up oil and. Yeah, for five of them. That's, that's. Oh, yeah? Okay. This one's trying to do a lot of. Me. Yeah.
Oh. That's where it's.
I'd like to get those back.
There's a separate field.
Yeah.
Separate pieces of property, not as.
I didn't think you did that. I thought once you had fifteen. There you go.
Yes, everybody.
Power.
Reminds. I'm a colleague. I'm kind of a colleague. I'm working. Surely. Um, what's that? So that's what we're gonna do. That's not like. There's still some time.
Yeah.
You know, you're driving. But that's a good thing. No, you. Well, yes, for a little while it'd be gravel.
Just to get it out.
Correct.
My wife's.
I guess we didn't get through the line because. So I have to pull across. It was actually.
Right. And then add the. After you get beyond your drive. Gravel. There's. And then at the end, sure, it's a last. And then the.
Falling.
Polls and planting grass are gonna be the two last. Um, so that's good. So it sounds pretty. Obviously, that's. By me, they're like.
I imagine the neighbor would probably.
I was just gonna say. Then. Eric. So he sent me. He's saying, oh, there you go. And so I look. And he says. Three way here. So. So I owe him. Call or return. And I'm gonna tell him the same thing. Look. Put a bag. This. Yeah. He, he had something. He said he needed access. Yeah, it's something like that, he said. Yeah. So I think that. That you do. So if you see him. It's a bad call. I responded. Was a job.
Yeah.
That's good. I knew I would see it.
Well, it's like I. Yeah. Worrier about all the details. He's gonna mark the water line and look that up.
Got in.
Whatever you do. That's the parent responsibility. Harson. Well, the other two, how come? Followed to. On what name, that was second street. Romania. They kept the line out. They put it across.
Oh, so you get two years under the road separately and leave.
Right. They just the water line.
Yeah, because let me guess, you split off your property and built. Because they actually, they give you one connection directly proper. Gotcha.
Needs a water line. My parents.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they have to.
Yes. So all I had to do was dig it up.
Tap into. Yeah, the piece of copper tubing is still there. You just gotta dig in the right. I'm going to the middle.
Overall. Send her.
If you're. Go respect this. That is. Yeah, no, that we don't plan. We'll do that. I'm assuming that. No. They're probably. She owns. And the road is asking. And. His driveway.
So I. And.
That's just.
Yeah, all of us. My, all of mine.
You overhead.
They're overheaded.
Oh. Oh, then they go down. Then they go. There's no gas, right?
Right.
So you're only experiencing. So you go.
Yep. Yeah, I don't know, we were kids. I were the same way. Every once in a while.
All right, so I'm gonna call it ordered, the Mass Denny Planning Commission meeting for September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook.
Here.
Mr. Siobhan.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Wallenhorst.
Here.
All right. First item is approval, the August sixteenth meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments or corrections? I think you're all here. Anything? Feel free to make a motion.
We should be accepting that.
One second. All right. All in favor? All right. All right. All right, our first item, conditional use to build an oversized garage at eighty-nine seventy-three North Bedford. Is somebody here representing?
Yes.
But you guys, just feel free to come up and get as close or not as close as you want here. You wanna pack up? Want to sit. Go ahead. I guess briefly, just wanted to give us a quick overview of what's your plan. I guess it's clearly it's an oversized garage.
Yeah, yeah, just for the storage space and I'm trying to make a workspace for my kids. Teach them how to use things. What works and stuff like that.
Very, very good. I know we do have comments.
Yeah.
Mr. Prince, can I go over here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my report dates September eleventh. And as we're aware, the applicant's proposing an oversized garage. One thousand one hundred and fifty-two square feet, fairly large detached garage. The property is just under one point six acres, zoned R1. As the commission is aware, section eleven sixty-three oh two H and I of the Planning and Zoning Code regulate detached, larger detached accessory structures. This particular structure complies with sections H and I. The code refers the reader back to section eleven thirty-seven oh four, which is the conditional zoning certificate chapter. Of course, that's why we're here this evening. We held that public hearing earlier. And that particular section does require a site plan. The site plan needs to be to scale. It needs to show adjacent buildings within two hundred feet, and it also needs to provide grading and drainage details. That's really the issue, as far as I'm concerned. All the other requirements for the detached structure are fine. It just, it's twelve feet off the side property line. The code requires ten, so it meets the setback. But that's very close to the property line, and the structure is essentially a small house. I mean, there's some houses that are about that size in Macedonia or less. And in such case, we typically would require a grading, a grading plan, just to ensure that drainage doesn't flow onto the neighboring property. You want to take a look at where the downspouts from the structure go and make sure, again, there's no drainage going onto a neighboring property. So I think from the perspective of the detached garage itself, it's fine. Would recommend approval, but it's subject to. I had recommended tabling, they provided a scaled site plan, so we have that. I think it's probably okay, if the commission's okay with it, to allow it to be reviewed administratively. And just wrap our heads around the drainage and make sure with the grading plan that drainage is not, again, going onto a neighboring property.
All right. Mr. Roach, do you have anything?
I have nothing further.
No, I just agree with Brian in that we can review it administratively, but we need to be sure that stormwater be maintained on the subject property, not onto a neighboring property.
All right. So obviously, you guys saw his comments and provided.
Yeah.
Provided his plan.
Yeah, so we, we actually have, both neighbors have built fairly large garages that are ten feet off our property as well. This area is like a valley in between the two properties, and there's about a thirty-foot drop from North Bedford to Indian Creek. So we have a nice elevation drop to the backyard. So, you know, if there's, if we have to put some sort of drainage to get so far away from their property and going towards the back, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think, you know, just, just because of the size.
Understand.
A little, little tiny shed like I got in my backyard.
Understand. Yeah. So we, we have enough of a drop off where we could put, we could put some pipe in the ground and run it so far back.
And I think, yeah, just having a plan that kind of documents that. The administration. You guys have any questions? Okay. Well, if that's the case, you wanna make a motion?
Sorry, but would this be something I could just, I could draw up then and then just submit to the building department?
Please do.
Okay.
I think so.
Yeah, I think we'd just be looking for exactly to show where the downspouts go. It sounds like you have a good idea to install a storm outlet pipe into the back towards Indian Creek, safe from all your neighboring property owners. I think that's what we'd be looking for. And you can just submit it to Susan.
Yeah. I think it, I wouldn't even let pipe go right into the creek. It probably wouldn't stop fifty, seventy-five feet till the water fills the ground.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
All right, with that, I would make. Need to be included as part of the construction plans then? This one's middle. Building construction plan.
Right, yeah, we will, we'll end up needing construction documents, you know, prior to the, you know, like, for pin, permitting. So when you're ready for permitting, you'll bring those in order to a plan review.
Okay, but this isn't something that I'll have to get through then at another meeting? Not.
No, no, that, that's administrative.
That's fine. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the plan with administrative review of a grading, drainage plan. Grading.
Yeah.
Drainage and grading. All right, any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Aye. All right, yeah, we just work, we put the folks upstairs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next item is proposed conditional use for dental office in a B two community shopping district. Is someone here representing that? No. All right. Well. We could either come back to it or just deal with it. I don't know if the property owner was planning to be here or not. Susan, did you have any indication if they were gonna? No.
Uh, no, I, Mr. Chairman, I did, they will not be here.
They will not be here, okay. We'll just.
Do you want to slide it to the back of the agenda?
But they're not, they're not gonna be here or?
No.
For sure? I guess, Mr. Prince, do you see the issue? I mean, do you have any issue with the?
No, I think the biggest issue was making sure the parking was adequate. We, we know that they're covering the parking issue with the expansion of the building. They went to the BZA. We know that they're doing the fence along eighty-two to match GFS. I, I feel the use is fine. It's, it's conditionally permitted, and I don't foresee any type of stipulation on this particular use. It's already operating.
Yeah.
We're not getting any complaints about, you know, some egregious use that's in that building. So I, I think it's fine if the commission felt comfortable to just approve it regardless of the applicants here. But I will say, it's good to do so and have them, Mr. Roach and I were talking, it's good to have it on the record and get it approved. And so it's all.
Right. Yeah, even though it's, you know, not done for using air and operating, it's just a good, good thing to have. Anybody have any comments on this? Any issues with conditioning use? All right. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use for a dental office in the B two community shopping district. Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is Osborne Capital requesting to amend the Macedonia Commons sinus criteria. Good. Good evening. Sign this other thing. All right, can we get your name for the record?
James Markowski.
All right. Why don't you just give us a quick overview? I think we know what the issue is. Go ahead.
Sure. From what I understand, it's all way before me, back to the nineteen nineties with Mass Denny Commons. There were some restrictions, I guess, on signage. It's kind of unclear, but it looked like there was a, it was not allowed to be script lettering unless it was like a registered trademark. That's from what I see now. I think there were, in the past, there was some talk of amending that, but it never happened. So basically, we're here to make to request a formal, I think it's very interchange. I think these are restrictions specifically for Mass Denny Commons, citywide, that we put, you know, agreed to on Mass Denny Commons way back when it was low in the nineties. So we're here to request that be amended to allow script lettering.
All right. Mr. Prince, if you have any comments?
Sure, my report dates September eleventh. I, I just want to be clear that there is no script lettering permitted in the Commons, trademarked or otherwise. The Commons criteria has always been that script lettering is prohibited. Back in, I think it was fourteen, we looked to amend it. At that time, the previous property owner requested an amendment. I indicated in my memo, there were three issues. Had to do with the sign height, both for major retail stores, miscellaneous stores, and then allowing tenants to choose their own sign color, which is really the, the main issue that, that the commission had been seeing at that time. Unfortunately, I guess this is, I'm becoming an old man because I was around, so that's how I, I know for sure. It had nothing to do with trademark. I know there's a document floating around that, that speaks to that. And we actually talked about that here maybe, I don't know, a year ago. So I, I don't know quite where that thing came from, but I put a link to the video. Definitely script is not permitted regardless of trademark or otherwise. Now, with that said, it's really just whether or not the commission thinks script lettering is appropriate. And I indicated, and I think the applicant has done as well, crossing a golden link specifically, there's a number of signs in there that have. golden link specifically, there's a number of signs in there that have mixed script and block lettering. I don't see an issue with it. Again, I don't quite know, it does predate me back into the late 90s, but I don't, I don't quite know why script lettering was prohibited at that time, but there are a number of examples in other retail plazas, so it is very specific to the Commons. Lots of signs do allow or have script lettering in them, so if the commission agrees, I don't see any reason why you couldn't amend the common sign, the common sign criteria and just do so with a motion of the commission.
Thank you.
I have nothing further.
All right. Guys got questions?
I just, obviously, the color restrictions and things that we discussed with other signs still in play, you just talked about script, but the style of lettering, right?
Yeah, that's right. So, the new code, revised code that we implemented maybe 18 months ago, that recognizes the various sign plans for the retail plazas and basically accepts them into the code, and so color in the Commons can be picked by the tenant, so color's not an issue, really is just whether we want to allow script lettering.
I really thought it'd be a problem. That sounds easy.
And there's still other restrictions in place to keep people from going against the kind of spirit of the law.
Yeah, and there's still size and all that kind of stuff, you know. I'll just be claiming that. Yes, so I'll make a motion to amend. Yeah, the Massoni Commons sign criteria to allow script lettering, script style lettering. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman. I, I keep notes, it's sort of my official copy of all the dates of when you do things. So, just for the record, Exhibit A, signing criteria for miscellaneous stores for the Commons, it will be item number five. It currently, the last sentence states, letters shall be generally block style with script style letters being prohibited. I just simply changed based on your motion, because I think I heard it this way, instead of saying prohibited, it says permissible.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. While we're signing that, the next item up is Dominion. Got the team? And you can pull over to the chair or sit closer, stand. If you don't mind, I know we've all, I think we've all been here, we just get names for the record.
Ryan Smith, Virginia.
Robert Mune.
Perk Smo, Oklahoma.
Mike Wolf, Oklahoma, engineering group.
All right. All right, well, you've been in here before various things. Why don't you give us an overview of what's changed and what's going on?
Okay. We are back this time with Board of Building Improvement for the gravel area, as well as the use. I was hoping to have it by the time we're here, but our parcels have been surveyed and legal restrictions created. We're going to have that tomorrow for the survey. If approved, this will file with the county and the county. We also have an updated landscaping plan, which incorporates renewed parcel out of the hole.
What are we, do you have?
I know we updated the lighting plan for our parcel, part of this, and we showed the 16.5 foot handles that they were operating on.
Yes, we do have one overall right now for the combined parcel.
Where is it? Want to see the overview?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Prince, you want to go over here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report dated September 12th. Pretty straightforward, as these guys stated, they got the variances from the Portland zoning appeals. I will say again, appreciate you guys working with the city, you've been great to work with. It's a big project with, it had lots of issues, so working through those things, and appreciate that. The, the two properties being combined, that's great, I'm glad to hear it, just, we will need to have that come to the planning commission. County doesn't really have anything to do with it other than they record it, so it will have to come here to the planning commission for formal approval. Shouldn't be an issue, it's really just, you know, the engineering will check to make sure the legal's closed and it's set up, teed up to be approved by some county, but we'll need to come back here. And then, I, I don't know if we ever got clarification in the micro pool, but I left that comment remaining, what that actually means. It shows on sheet three, I believe. And then, as the applicant pointed out, lighting is good, complies with the commission's historic practice of lighting levels. And then, the only thing I did recommend is to change the Norway spruce out to something different, Colorado blue spruce, or con color fir, or maybe a combination of the two. Just some issues with Norway spruce, they're great species, but some issues with, with some disease that we may want to do that out. Other than that, I'd recommend approval subject to those, a couple minor issues.
All right. Mr. Rodek, again?
I have nothing further.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. You guys have probably all seen my comment letter. I'll just get right to the ones that really apply or maybe should be discussed here tonight, a couple of which, it seems already, may have been addressed. Bob, is it correct, they have a variance in place for the gravel in parking lot or installation, I guess, for the south half of the site?
That's correct.
Okay, so that one has been changed since my previous review, and it sounds like we have a new lighting plan in place, which I, I believe complies with our code. I'll let Brian be the final judge of that. So, that only leaves two real comments on my letter, and I know that this is all a little bit of a work in progress. One is storm water management. A detention pond is shown for what had previously been known as the north parcel, but no detention for the south parcel. Sounds like the two parcels are being combined. Either way, the addition of the gravel parking area would necessitate some storm water detention for that south parcel, so I don't know how you guys plan to do that, if you're incorporating them all together to dump into one pond. I'll, I'll let your design engineer show us exactly how he wants to handle that and provide the calculations. Something that probably can be reviewed internally or administratively later, but at this point, you know, just let us know what your intention is, please. And the only other unaddressed item or that should be discussed here this evening would be the sanitary connection. Does need to be bored under Shepherd Road. The plans that were submitted for this meeting did not indicate or did not clarify how that would be installed, so. That's all I have, Chairman. Yeah, that'd be, yes, that'd be good, just to make sure we indicate it on future plans and depending on how this goes tonight, so maybe that should be a part of the motion, Chairman.
As I previously stated earlier, based on the initial structural design of that building, based on size and square footage, it's not going to be sprinkled, you want to park your equipment in there, that looking like it was blocked out, so maybe get to that point for the construction doctors to figure out where, what you're up against there.
You know, what's been approved? I have questions for you guys.
I noticed on one of your plans, I don't know what's going on, I'm looking at one through this. Please determine all the M and R building, the maintenance and repair?
Measurement and regulation.
Measurement and regulation.
The shop. Right. You guys have any questions? So, I guess, you know, are you guys okay with the landscape change, some species? The lighting plan that you guys were looking at, is that the most recent thing that was submitted, or was there? I'm not sure. Is there still some comments on the most recent plan?
I think the lighting's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, still will be, you know, stormwater issues, definitely will mention the sanitary connection, but I think we beat this up pretty good over many months. You guys okay with that? I'll make a motion to approve with administrative review of the landscaping plan, the detention, and sanitary connection, which would be to be bored under Shepherd Road. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Does that sound?
That, that sounded great. I believe I heard also that the lot combination will need to come to commission.
I guess that is a question. If, if the commission in general was okay with the combination, city engineer reviews it and finds no technical issues, is that, or is it really best to come?
It's entirely up to the commission. I mean, I would feel more comfortable if it came back because you've never seen it, but it is a technical review.
Yeah, and maybe a review of our code, because Chairman, as you remember from instances in the past, there are some exceptions as to when something can be just reviewed administratively and then approved by myself and yourself, and there are times when it's a major subdivision or whatever the terminology is in which it needs a, a vote of the full planning commission, so.
So, I guess, I guess you want to check on that?
I think that's what we should do, as to whether it needs the full planning commission or just you and I.
Okay. Consolidation, probably looking back and we'll see if I have something. But besides that, there was those couple issues, we have a motion, a second, more discussion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion, Jesus. All right, guys. Yeah.
Plant was distributed on Friday. You guys have a Friday, I'm sure. Shows a slight location difference of the storage unit. I want to see if you guys want to pay with that, because yet we'll have a public better move out of way from our property, get further, further away from, you know, the, the.
Set off the property line more.
Further on, 100.
How far are they?
100.2 feet.
70 feet to 120 feet.
I, I did see that, and I think I felt it was okay, and I think it's, it's going to be pretty well hidden by. Yeah, I, I think it's probably better, you know, and I did notice that we didn't discuss it specifically here. You guys are okay, but we'll just leave, leave our approvals.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it, it further complies with the code, so it's fine. If it was going the other way, we'd have a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks, guys. We'll miss you. All right, next is Panda Express. All right, can we get your name for the record?
George Eric Adlin, architecture, representing Panda Express.
All right. Would you like to give us a overview of what's changed since the last time?
Sure, so from last month's meeting of preliminary site plan approval, we, the big change was that we consolidated the driveways as requested, maintaining the existing curb cut location. We did widen it to 40 feet rather than the existing 30 feet, and I'll come up in discussion later. We also confirmed that we're adhering to the development criteria as far as the landscape setbacks, landscape buffers provided. Still a little bit of conversation on the plant material list. So, as far as the site goes, that was the majority of it. The other big item is that we're not going to do the subdivision, going to maintain it as a single lot, that thereby changes the landscape buffers between the phase one, we'll call Panda Express, and phase two of the unknown restaurant to be determined. So, it just sort of, really just takes that off the table. Still developing it, looking at it cohesively as far as site plan goes and available access. As far as the building goes, we addressed a little bit more detailing, adding some cones to the corners, reworking and eliminating more canopies and just having a single canopy with a drive-through, takes off a few of those elements, provided the cut sheets for the lighting, and made sure that the electrical, or I'm sorry, the rooftop mechanical equipment screen, we were able to raise the building up a little bit while maintaining proportions and also maintaining the maximum heights for the building itself as far as air vent and towers. Provided the details of trash enclosure, made sure that the back equipment and doors are all painted to match the red brick rather than what the back of the crews had. I think that's, that kind of rounds out the major changes.
Okay, okay. Mr. Prince, would you like to go over your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Report dated September 11th. Just a couple real brief items. So, as the applicant indicated, the 40 feet is definitely something I think the commission should talk about. We did talk about the single point of access at the last meeting, but I'm not sure why it's been increasing 30 to 40. Most industrial curb widths are 36 feet or less for three-lane traffic, and then it would further than, it confuses me if it's not being combined in only a single lot, or it's not going to be divided, and it's only a single lot for one business, why you would need the increase width in the first place. So, that is something I think we should, we should talk through and work through. It's, it's very wide. And then, the, the, as the applicant stated, the separations and things, I think, do meet the requirements. The landscape area, three feet in width, blanking secondary customer insurance, I think, is compliant now. Just the only thing I, I do believe is we need to look at our landscape materials. It's item M in the crossings criteria, and when I looked through, it looked like there were different materials. I could be, I could be missing something, but.
I think, if I could interject, the, the majority of them, it's like maple, but it's a certain type of maple. So, I think I need to first understand if it has to be specifically that species maple or?
It does.
And so, then I'll get back to my landscape. And so then I'll get back to my landscape, where we can look at that specific species. Because he's given maple and we're working on the same list apparently too. So I'm sure why it's so difficult for us to get that list incorporated into the site.
Yeah, it's okay. I would agree. It's, so you did list a maple versus the type of maple. So I would just follow whatever's in the recommended plant material. I'm sure the maple they expect is just fine, but it's not quite the one that's in here, so. But it's real minor. I mean, it'd be, we can get through that. So I did recommend approval, but subject to the conversation I think you should have about the width of that drive apron.
So you're thinking administrative review of the final landscape plan?
Yeah.
Okay, just make sure. Alright, Mr. Rodeck, anything?
I have nothing.
Nothing at this time, Chairman, other than that assuming planning commission approves tonight, we can do a final administrative review of the plans.
Is here down the old, roll the gravel off the.
Oh, no. It would be demolished during Phase 1 and it will be stabilized and turned to the side until we get to Phase 2.
Alright, so I guess the first issue is that driveway. Is there a good reason why you guys wanted it to be 40 feet?
Sure. We, 30-foot drive usually is too small. We find the trucks, you know, they're running the 46-foot truck with, depending on the type of tractor it's pulling, right? So it could be a sleeper cab. It's a Cisco delivery system. So they're going highway routes to different regions along the route. So our experience is that the wider we can get that, the better the turn radius is, the better we maintain those radiuses, they don't get all torn up. And then we still put gravel material on the corners because it'll get chewed up if it's grass or dirt. We just want to give the delivery trucks the best chance to not destroy the curb connections and make it a maintenance issue as we go through it. Even industrial parks, you know, as wide as you can make them, they're still over, the back of the trailer's still going over the side of the curves. I know 40 feet seems a little bit wide, but they have pretty large delivery trucks that are coming through here.
I guess I can understand the thinking behind it. Sometimes it doesn't matter how big you make it, they still, maybe make it 70 feet, they're still going to run around the curb and they're going to have grass, dead grass around it with their mud. 40 feet is just, it's wider than like a three-lane drive. I'm worried about control of the driveway, you know, because it doesn't need to be a left lane and a right lane. It's not that busy of a thing, so you've got two lanes that are 20 feet wide. This guy's going to use it as a single, the next guy's going to use it as a left and a right. Going to try and squeeze around and it just seems like there'd be a lot of confusion. It'd be nice if we could get down somewhat smaller to get a little bit more control of the driveway. Well, still, you know, allowing those big trucks, I mean, there's, coming off of Golden Link, you know, they probably won't use the turn lane, they're probably going to swing out and go through. They're going to swing in there. I think you can get it down to something a little bit more manageable. You know, if 30 feet, if you've seen that's an issue you've had with these trucks, I don't know, maybe 32, 34 maybe. But in my mind, 40 feet is just a, that's a giant driver. I just feel like you're going to have, you're going to have control issues. People doing stuff that they shouldn't, you know, driving around people. Someone pulled up there and someone squeezes around and then makes the left turn, and they were planning to make a lot harder. That's why it kind of concerns me and I think these guys were thinking some of the same things. Do you guys got thoughts on this plan?
I agree. I think dropping it down to 32 or 34.
It's still bigger than, you know, I know, I know we talked about the one across the street, you know, at the Lowe's. I specifically said that one. That one looks really tight. I feel like I'm going to get it every time I sit in a way and pull out. And I measured it, it's like 24, which is, it's a road. But for something about that, it's really, really tight. While it's a car swinging, it's.
It's, yeah, Chairman, I was just going to say the problem there, and it exists in many spots in that, in Golden Link, the radiuses are too small. You, yes, you almost have to go left of center or into the middle lane, or however you want to think of it, to actually make a turn. I, maybe a better way, instead of making a driveway that's 40 feet wide, is keep the driveway with its current width, just to have a big turning radius. Because almost all the traffic is going to go to and from the main entrance. So as people leave the Panda site, they'll be making a right-hand turn. So if you give it a large enough turning radius, you know, a 20-foot radius maybe, Chairman? Something along those lines, that would probably be enough for people to make a right-hand turn and leave plenty of space for people making a left-hand turn to come on in to the Panda site from Golden Link Boulevard. So I think the, the size of the turning radius is more important than the width of the throat of the driveway, if that makes sense.
I think a good example of that is the east entrance to Lowe's, where there were delivery trucks coming in. There's a very large turning radius on those there.
Okay.
I don't, I have to go look at, but I don't think that there's a big problem.
Okay. Yeah.
What is the current width, you know, 30 feet?
Yeah, to me, that would seem like it should be plenty, because there's no through. It would just be in one lane coming in and one lane coming out, correct? Yeah, so 30 should be plenty. Those are two 15-foot lanes, which the Chairman's point is wider than a road. I think you have plenty of width. I think the turning radius, the turnout of the driveway, that's the most important thing. If those radiuses are too small, it almost doesn't matter how wide you make the driveway. People will have trouble navigating the turns.
So I think, yeah, I'd recommend dealing down the 30 that it is or maybe just slightly wider. But yeah, get it bigger on the radius on those to allow the trucks to come in better. I think if you get much bigger than that, and yeah, you could have somebody who's pulling up there right in the middle of that big lane, they're going to take a left, but they have left enough room to the left of them. Somebody pulls next to them, they can, you've got a potential crash situation. And it's a longer drive to walk across if anybody was actually wanting to go inside bar. But I guess, take that back, I'm thinking that's probably, you know, that revision and you could work back and forth with these guys.
Absolutely.
Administratively, they have to get something. I guess if there's really, you know, you come back and you just can't, you may have to come back here and just come to a count of the lines. I think something in there. You guys got any other thoughts on any other issues? How do you like the building? I think.
Building was really good. You changed the DDA for having four of the planes. The only question I did have was how far out are you guys not getting the joint?
I don't think we could be on five. Usually it's the 2.5, but it looks like this is, this is probably a four. And typically, we're able to maintain that without any kind of turn buggles.
That's fine. That's why I was asking. I just want to make sure that wasn't a map or it's going to turn buggles.
I know the other half of the thing is still to be determined. And I'm assuming, I guess, you do show, the other one has a drive-through. They're going to have to go down, pass the building, and come back towards the entrance, right?
Yeah, they'll enter more, the entry will be at the north side.
Yeah. Kind of flip the building, rotate it opposite. Well, I like the building. I think the site plan, besides the driveway, I think that you could work with administratively. And I guess give them the landscape materials approved. Is there anything else? Do you have any, any issues with it? And we got the dumpsters all cleaned up, so that is free.
I like the change in the door colors so they match. Yeah, I thought they'll go almost.
We didn't get another common response from her.
No, and I think usually if we don't see something from her, she's okay with it. Yeah, I think so. It's my understanding. Is that good to assume? Okay. Alright, well, does anyone want to make a motion? You want me to do it again? Okay. That's it.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the site plan for Panda Express. Would be modifications noted during the meeting to reduce the driveway width coming out of the site from 40 feet to either leaving it to be this thing 30, possibly going up to 32. But before doing that, looking at the turn radiuses coming in, buy adequate turn radiuses there. Sorry. Nope. Sorry.
Try to keep up, Susan.
Where did you lose me?
Approved.
Approved with addition to reduce the driveway width to 30 feet as existing is. They feel it need to go more than 32 feet. The radius should be the first investigation, to just make the radius possibly with 12 feet, like it has on the internal portion of the site. And we're okay with that, or we can directly with engineer and building department to finalize that. Landscaping, we'll need to just do that administratively as well to match the public standards.
Good, Susan. Videos.
Yeah.
That's right.
Alright, is there a second? All right. Joe's seconded. Any more discussion? Alright, all in favor? Aye. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's, assuming things go well, what's their schedule?
Alright, so we're in the middle of working on the building plans. We should probably be submitting around a month from now. And they probably still won't start construction until the spring. Permitting will probably go pretty well, but we'll be at that point where it's going to be tough to get started. Get permits in hand, if we're really lucky, we have a nice garage, something we can get started. Still talking to them about demoing the building early. They'll probably wait to mobilize and just do all that second ones, but it's there.
Alright, so, someone?
Yes, we start construction, best case, April. Four-month construction schedule and, as I said, at the end of summer.
Alright. Alright, while we're signing that, next is IHOP.
Paul Lex, LMP Architecture, and behalf of IHOP, it's a backdoor restaurant.
Okay. Did you get, get that soon? Did you get his contact number?
Yes, I did.
Alright, want to give us an overview of what's changed since the last time you were here?
Yeah, we submitted a brick sample for comparison to the existing building. So we're going to envision our, bringing the walkings, new walkings. And we're, we're a couple on that?
That's correct, yeah. I actually compared the brick sample with the, with the existing structure. They closely match.
Okay, I was going to say. Been there before, I'm here in the early days.
And so we can add that to the finished legend and provide some. And then, if you guys have any comments if you'd like?
Okay.
Sure. So from, from the last time I reviewed it, I think the, probably the only thing that changed and not necessarily to the good, is the screening for the dumpster enclosure. The intent is to utilize a metal chain link.
Oh, it's not chain link, no. It's a solid, it's not corrugated, but it's essentially like a roof deck. So it's, it's monolithic, it can be painted to match the building color. And then the rest of the enclosure is very much.
So there's no privacy slats?
It is solid. It's a solid slide. It's not a panel, it's more durable than the wood or plastic.
And then the other items still remain from my, my previous review.
Right, we submitted full set, size set of drawings provided, but if you assess well, or the, you know, limit sheets that we submitted.
It'd just be good to have a scaled site plan, because it's more or less kind of a sketch now that's not to scale.
Right.
So it makes it difficult to value. I mean, I get it, it's an existing site and so. Yeah, there's not much changing, but, you know, I think the city's obligation is to build the record.
Yeah.
Right now, the record is, Mr. Westbrook said, it's a 40-plus-year-old site. So to build the record with a scale plan and to document these things. I think there's lighting changes, and so if there's lighting changes, we'd want to see the photo metrics to make sure that they're, I think the north property line butts up to a residential district, so make sure it's a half-foot candle or less.
Yep.
Max at the property line, you know, will 100% horizontal cutoff on the lighting. And then whatever landscape it says can be touched up. I don't know if there's new landscaping being proposed. Some of that landscaping is kind of shabby.
Yeah, there's, basically they're cleaning up what's already there. They're taking down the three trees on the southwest corner of the building. Or basically, you know, just, you know, signage that they need to do. And then I believe running a country and two shrubs over utilities. The, the, the racing canes to help screen those utilities, it's a cemented on the side.
So if there's new material, you should have a plan that documents that.
Yeah, I can either, I can either add that to that site plan, send to me in the notice, or we can hire somebody that can basically call out those three trees and the three trees being removed.
Yeah, that'd be great. Just again, so we have it for the record.
Yeah.
And then I'm looking at A18, A18.
Yeah.
And it shows the metal chain link gates.
Yeah, I think some of the details, maybe you're not matching the, the plan.
Yeah, it should be. Yeah, it should not be a.
Technically, it's not correct.
Yeah, three metal back, it should be a metal back. All the details show metal back. So we see where the chain.
Yeah, it's in.
Yeah, 13, that should not be there. All the other details in that show correctly.
Yeah, that's fine. So, so for the record, you're stating it's not going to be a metal chain link with privacy slats. Great. And then just to further reiterate for the record that it's not a 24-hour IHOP.
Correct. It's, there's no 24-hour signage. Yeah, to our knowledge, it's not a 24-hour use of the plastic.
Yeah. Do you know what the hours of operation will be?
I'd have to look and see what I put on the health department. Yeah, I have to look at their website, see if they're standard hours.
It'd be good to submit that with, on the, you know, updated site plan, what the hours of operation on.
Yeah, I can pull that right off the health department.
Thank you.
Mr. Roke, size of brick, what do you think?
I have nothing further.
Alright.
Other than once we get into the build-out on the inside, we've got a lot of stuff and testing and everything to do.
What do you need to have, for sure?
Well, for your kitchen, for antel, so partially.
Oh, yeah. They'll have all that. Cat to bear does all the, so I had a full set of for drawings in our studio. But the features, but, yeah, they'll have that and all the testing that's on.
Yeah, the smoke test.
Yeah.
All the acceptance tests and required.
Correct.
Alright, commission, I guess, have kind of answered questions.
You look for it, see. And you're thinking like, I'm pretty long-term, less going to be the crap versus for the trash.
You know, like, the vinyl gate is, I think, probably comparable just for long-term maintenance, but it sounds like your desire is to paint that the same color.
Right, this time, yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's probably going to be fine. It's probably gonna be fine.
I guess it's just, it's, it's a protective detail, it's more durable, it, they won't get destroyed by the trucks, like the building, the plastic, so our intent was, you know, something that was bonded last year.
Yeah. You put dollars in there to protect?
Yeah, which is the dollars in the impact, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's probably fine, I think. It'll look nice, as long as they stay on top of the maintenance, I think it will be fine.
Do you get any, any issue? You good? Snap?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I think we, we talked about the building previously, um, you know, I think changes have been made, but much as can be, but trying to still use the same building to get it to look like something that's not a pizza. Um, site plan's not changing significantly, uh, changes are good. So, it looks like there's a couple of issues, you know, outstanding, the landscape plan, the lighting, uh, you had that lighting comment?
Yeah.
Were you guys gonna update?
Yes, we're gonna take out all, replace those. We have a national vendor that we use and if the pre-spec, uh, that we have, uh, we can submit for approval, free, and then we pull an alternate rad fixture as well, but, um, really, if, if you don't like the pre fixture, we can go back to, uh, the national vendor, the rep, and, uh, just basically go with lighting package from, uh, one person and, and they pretty much revert to all those sorts, uh, so we can work with them and make it available here as well.
It'd be good to, um, just have all of that in one...
Yeah, one package.
Scale.
Yep.
Package.
Exactly. We deliver the photo metric, we deliver our site plan, for those who have any, uh, questions for the, like...
Ultimately, that's what will be out on site for construction purposes, so if there's any disputes, it's...
I can, I can obviously involve this group.
And, Mr. Chairman, can I ask you one more question?
Please.
Can you just, so, for, maybe just for my own identification?
Yeah.
How, how do we, the site previously had sixty-two spaces, or the required is sixty-two spaces? When we looked at this previously, it was fifty-two, then it went to fifty-four, now it's fifty-eight?
Yeah, what I did was, um, I actually went back to the aerial photograph because the plan that we, we were working off the existing asphalt drawing, um, that hadn't been field verified, and then essentially we did the field verification and noticed that, uh, the back of the log had been restripped, so there were, uh, extra spaces back there and, um, when we relocated the, um, trash enclosure that was very visible in, in that front, uh, area, we actually picked up three spots.
Yeah. And you picked up some on the relocation.
Yeah, and I don't think those were through in our original count.
Yeah. And the city, so, the commission knows, and for the record, you can allow a reduction up to twenty percent in the code, so there is no concern that there's variance needed or anything, they, they have enough parking.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're willing in that.
Right. Just, again, the builder record, you're, you're adequate in terms of parking.
Correct, yeah.
I did just actually catch something up. I've noticed that we don't have elevations, there are records on the front of the building, so you have those, 'cause I did just...
Oh, I thought we had those in the, the original, but I thought you need, need those in, in this one as well.
I didn't see.
Oh, okay, 'cause there shouldn't have been, um...
It's okay.
Yeah, that, that didn't change, all we did was take the twenty-four-hour sign off, uh, try to find the side elevation.
And do you still have that red band that goes around the, at the front?
Yes, or, actually, no, the gable, uh, I think that was blue.
Okay, 'cause it's still loaded out, the elevation, that's just what caught my eye a little bit, where you are calling out three accents from...
Right.
On these.
Yeah.
So, on your 2D elevation, you should probably update that.
Right.
Is that something?
Yeah.
Ken was gonna say the same thing.
Sorry, maybe we should take that.
All right, um, so I guess, you know, the couple of issues, landscaping, we probably think could be done administratively, you'll update the plan with a variety of other things that have been discussed tonight. Uh, sign, signage would have to come back, we haven't seen the sign.
Right, um, signage is gonna be by, um, helping displays, uh, I'm working, working on the sign drawings, I reached out to him today, see what he's, he was on, uh, the videos, we, we, so, um, as soon as I hear back from him, uh, they, they're one of the national vendors for, uh, IHOP. Um, he should, I know he provided a quote with you, Alex, and, uh, we, that, I contracted from the signs, so he should be right there for the drawn, this year, though, because I have, um, uh, basically as soon as they can start with construction, we'll start to, to divide the holidays.
Okay.
And we have a contract in this, uh, last July.
This year?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
When those, get some, those, you, you come in, when those come in front of the plan, what should you think, or do you...
I may come in, uh, normally that'll be handled directly by the sign company, but, um, if I need to be here, I, I do.
The only reason I say, sometimes, you know, they, they send just the sign guy in...
Yeah.
And there's an issue that we have with it, and their decision has to be made, hey, you can do this, or you can do this, and he's like, ah, I don't know, I'm just the sign guy.
Yeah, so they don't help us, but I agree with what I can do.
I guess it might, it might depend on what, what comments you see.
Yeah.
If you see something in the comments that, like, or has it recommended for approval?
Right.
You could probably send the sign guy, but, you know, if there's anything that, that might, you know, that he's got an issue with, you may want to convince him, it makes it, makes it easier to see. Many times the sign guy's just, I'm not gonna like, go back and ask, but I, I have no authority to say anything, so...
Then, yeah.
See what the comments are on there.
I can, I can be here, please.
All right, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion if anyone wants to take a stand.
Okay, all right, I motion approval based on administrative review, so, help me out on this one here. Um, scaled plans, landscaping review, lighting review, and I probably think we should say something about we're, we're going to go ahead with the solid steel prime painted gate to conceal the dumpster enclosure.
And also removal of EP three, sorry, which is the red accent.
That again? No, so I say it again, no.
Uh, removal of EP three.
Removal of EP three.
EP three, word. It's from Star Wars, I think, EP three. All right, I'll second that. Susan, did you get all that?
I believe I got that.
So, we got the landscape, got the lighting, got EP three, got Eric, EP two. Any more discussion?
Uh, they also, you see, provide, look, the hours of operation for the, for...
Right. If you want to amend your motion to include...
Sure. Um, sorry, I'll amend my motion to, and, including the hours of operation.
I'll second that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're a step closer, still a little step to move.
One, they stepped closer to pancake.
Pancake, that's right.
That's right.
Love it.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Slimeless thing will get it started. I know we've seen you guys, I know we've seen you guys, but, uh, just for the record, just take, take your name.
Sure. My name is Chief, we're, uh, we're in the, uh, I'm, 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 But if you guys with that, turn it over and let you guys just give a quick overview what's changed and your comments from the staff.
Yeah, like you said, we really took a hard look at the architecture that was exposed and destroyed. Lowered that tower down, pretty similar to the mansion roof. Added additional. That's what we deserve most around here. So we tried to make it good. The owners, the most part, except for that.
Reluctantly, you had to welcome a little bit.
Very busy, we got there. A lot of convincing, but that's.
And again, what happened with those two, like you can see it looks a lot.
It will be a nice addition. I think, you know, size optimization, there's just so much, they need that size on it, they can't. They've done everything possible to make it.
Yeah, and, you know, I think getting the tower down, various other things you've done. I mean, not everything has to be the same size. You know, you've got big old those back there. I mean, you've got some things of a different size, it's okay. I kind of wish something was a little bit bigger than Chipotle next to it, you know, but it is what it is. If you guys are okay with good comments, but if you want to say anything in general.
I just, you pretty much said everything I want to say, just because I kind of came across all the critical last meeting and was even disquoted by the newspaper. But anyways, I was very excited when you sent my inbox. I think virtually everything I was looking forward to are in these drawings, so we'll hear the comments and see if there's any discussion on that. But I really appreciate ownership. But they sent a message, they definitely want to be in this community and they're willing to commit the concessions that they did, especially on things like the Oculus. It sounded like, like Mr. Westbrook said, it seemed like we were way off on at the beginning. So really appreciate you working with us and excited to see what this goes, so.
All right, Mr. Russell, turn it back to the comments.
I mean, in general, nice job. I have a few additional comments, but we'll go to where you may go back.
All right, Mr. Branch.
Sure, my report dated September 12th. So on the site plan, we do need to see a section. You have a section for the fence and columns with the light posts on the architectural elevations, but not on the site plan. So need to have that included on the site plan and construction documents. Architecture is being discussed. And in the last lengthy discussion on my memo relates to the signage. There was a revision to the ground sign, a little less square footage. I do think it complies with the code. We had some conversation about the base and whether it was, you know, if it was necessary as part of the signage. Because the code has some limitation, but I do think it complies with the code. The revisions on the wall signs, the east building elevation. For some reason, that signage went up to 125 square feet. It was previously 100. The west elevation remains at 75. And then north elevation is now 75 and was previously 100. And then the south elevation still remains at 125. The ground signs, a little over 35 square feet. So there still is a deficiency that needs to be overcome in terms of the amount of signage, the area. The site's provided about 309 total square feet and you're proposing now 435.1 versus previously 438.9. So need for variance, I don't know what the status of that is. Typically signage comes through as a separate review and not done with the site plan. We do it as a sort of a courtesy review to let you know how much you're entitled. And then the signs come through as a separate application. In this case, you would need to get a variance or reduce the area.
Sorry, we actually, the last time we were here, the application for the variances included the side variances and the sign variances. But the rationale was in between. So I think they didn't get caught in the application. So when we looked before the board of zoning appeals, we were just on the side variance, but actually we had applied for them. Now, with the revisions, obviously we'll go back. We understand that we need to go before the BZA on the signs, so we'll make sure.
And it's up to the commission if the BZA approves it. If, again, typically they come back, they come through as a separate application. But it's gotten this far with, on the site plan. So it's up to the commission if you, if the BZA approves it, if you want it to come back as a separate application or you're good with it being in the site plan.
If there's a way, if we can keep moving on the site plan, we'd really appreciate it. The sign packages are ready, you know, we've submitted those. It's not coming as a separate review. It's been, you know, with the preliminary time we are here today. So timing is obvious and scary. We've had, you know, I think if there's a way that we can keep moving on this, we truly appreciate it.
From a general look, I mean, I think I'm okay. We've got, there's not issues like too many signs on a side. It's not that, it's just overall size. So things are going to either come down or you get your approval. Unless anybody's got an issue with the look of the sign on each side. I think we could probably approve, continue on approval.
We fully understand the BZA processing.
And so if the board of zoning appeals denies your request, would your intention then to be reduce it to comply with the limitation?
If we have to deal with it at that point and go back and see what we can do. We're hoping that the BZA would understand. That we would get the variance. If we don't get it, I think at that point, we'll have to deal with the consequences for this.
Sure.
We're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed. Because I think even as you noted in your comments, similar signs exist in the air. You know, we're not going drastically different than what's already been committed around this.
Well, of course, with, you know, with the variance, as you're aware, that's really not relevant. It's a practical difficulty based on the property in question. And of course, if you, if you're not approved, that you know the process, 2506 appeal or.
Hopefully, hopefully we don't get through 2506.
Right, yeah.
We'll have to go directly through what we did.
Sure.
We get it on first pass.
Sorry to interrupt your school.
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
Yep.
I have nothing to add.
Nothing, Chairman. All the comments on my memo are all items that can be reviewed administratively.
I'm waiting on the board.
All right, commission, what do you, who knows, Scott Scott.
Okay, yeah, so overall, guys, great job. I mean, I really appreciate the hard work and effort in this and really kind of getting it closer to our standards. I have a couple of comments that I do have, however, are. So above some of the windows that we're doing the brick detail, the brick recess detail. I know we're still doing the white bricks, kind of the fault there, the detailing there. They seem a little odd. They just seem, because if you're either they catch them or know what's going on there, they just also top it like a white block. I mean, personally, I would almost just rather see this go away. I know you did that on the back elevations where you don't have them there. And I think they look better that way because I think you just also got this little white band. And I know what you're signifying, but it just seemed a little, they seemed a little odd. If there's a window there, I think they're great. If there's not a window there, I think maybe just an removal of those wouldn't be a bad idea. I'll let the rest of the commission comment on that. The doors, I think we talked about this last time, let's just see those to be the color of the brick to match. The trim around them is fine to be the white color, similar to what some of the other windows are. And then the only other comment I have is, and I know the Oculus has been a huge topic of discussion at the last meeting. Great improvement, something still just doesn't feel right about that, especially with the loop cut in there. You've got, you've had the loop line coming across there and then it comes in. I would almost rather you see that loop line continue. And if you want to keep just almost like a clear story set of windows there, I think that would look better. Just kind of where that cut in there, it almost seems like it's, the architecture's fighting itself there. In terms of just how that piece is getting done in like that. But the rest of it, the windows want to be recessed, and if they are, I have no issue with that. I think just maybe carrying that loop line across and then just letting it like those be in there by themselves and recessed would look a little better.
Can you just model it for us?
Yeah, it would just almost be like a third story window up there. Does that make sense to them?
Yeah, the, so the white trims, we would be absolutely ecstatic.
Just on the window, just on the fake windows. Yeah, so if you take the brick indentation out, just remove that white, it's almost like a white eyebrow and they just look. I mean, when you look at it, this elevation right here, you can't see that detail. And although it's there, they just, they look weird. So I'd almost rather see that go away. Like the back elevation, when you look at this one right here, they have the recessed brick detail there and there's no eyebrow over them. I think it looks really nice. It's just a subtle little detail, provides a little relief on the elevation. And I think that's a nice touch that doesn't need to, you know, there's enough windows, there's two windows there. I think we should find, again, the brick detail, provides that relief on the elevation itself.
Yeah, that part would be the only kind of challenge I'm looking for when the grant. They like the big, like, the big door, the big creature.
I could understand it, I could agree if there were, you know, if there were, like, a rail in or something to make it look really like. I had thought about railing, I wasn't sure how that was going to look. What I don't want to do is keep creating and adding additional bunch of different materials and then start talking different architecture and start fighting one another. Or railing was one of my thoughts possibly. My, one of the other thoughts I had was that maybe that doesn't continue past where that Oculus is and stops short of it. And then that window just sits there kind of somewhat by itself. I don't know how that would look either, though.
We could, we're, I understand.
Looking at a couple of different options for that, I think it's going to help finish and complete it out. But just the biggest problem of having it where that roof continues and it just, it looks unfinished. It looks like there's something missing there and there just needs to be a little bit more detail worked out. Maybe railing, maybe the roof just stops there, that location doesn't continue on, which might even help tie, you know, to the tower element. And then you have the shorter roof on the other side. But I think the way that the building kind of slowly goes up to the higher part works out well. I like that addition, I like the detail on the towers. So I think, again, overall, very nice, great job. The only concern I have still is just how does that, how does that detail out properly and not look out of place or like it was just an afterthought? You guys have done a great job explaining what it means. Somebody driving by might think otherwise and they're not going to understand that story. They're going to wonder why it maybe someone looks that way, so.
Yeah.
I'm struggling with the railing too.
I think like 15 years down the road, whenever I see the railing, they're always saggy and they're not easy to get to. Nobody gave me a opinion.
I wouldn't do, I would, if they were railing, I would have a black wrought iron railing, like.
They would have to do something like that because it's like.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't, no, I would never recommend plastic on that. So if you're like, you put some weed on that and it gets colored, it all starts to sag over time. Something, a black one, a black wrought iron going across the front there to help it, almost looks like a balcony at that point. But maybe even better, just stopping the roof shy a bit or just if you want to continue to move across. And then just to almost like a clear story and where else can we grant a standard? If there was a function behind that, like, well, like we were going to explain, I could understand. Probably get a little bit more behind that, but considering there's not really any kind of function filtering light down into it. I don't, it's still just seeming a little bit out of place. You made a couple of the other elevations you guys have done. First floor elevation, your windows, small windows up top. Thought that would go down.
What's on the other side of the window?
It's just a panel, correct? I think it's two, I think it's two. Did you guys provide a floor plan?
Not, I don't think it's a, it's a practice.
That would be helpful just to see, yeah, floor plan to understand that. And I guess if that truly is two cameras, making sure that it can provide it properly, we'd be back to the wall. Sitting in the middle of the room or just terminating that properly.
In my opinion, in terms of the window, I like what you're saying. I also don't necessarily really have a problem with it because I think maybe because I'm just so happy that it's not the thing before. I just, it's probably a fine thing, just I just didn't think it fit in here. So I'm just happy that that's not there, so I don't have a bigger problem. But also that's not one of my expertise. But I, so I'm, you know, I don't feel strongly.
Detail, I think, how did it transition, how does it, it's up on the bottom of that elevation so different? Like it's just, it looks unfinished, it looks like part of the roof is just cut away. So I think it's a, it's a, you know, I think at that point, it was that, because like, how's it trimming, how's the elevation? Because I think if you were to just cut the roof there and that might not look real clear. I can't point, I'm trying to visualize it, you know, if you did a nice white piece of trim below there, so it looks, it boxed itself out. And the roof didn't continue there, that might work better, so to say, but I don't know. It might hurt the elevation too at that point.
Sean, you have any questions?
I don't have any objection in any way, but it's true. I respect this comment and I respect yours too. I don't think that's any basis for my disapproval or anything like that. I think the big thing is that we can grant approval, I think, based on the BZA, you know, the approval of the area design requirement.
Yeah, we can just say either BZA approval or reduction. If they decided they just didn't get it, were going to give up, were shrinking it down, but you still have approval. One of those two.
Right, you don't have, that might happen if you wanted, not to appear again.
And it's not just a question of appearing. We're having issues, they have to close on the property, schedule construction season, you know, that there's a lot of things that. Their mythologists are already paid, even though there's not a. So that there's a lot of expense that's happening and that's.
So if we, further away, Mr. Wilson's opposing, if they don't get BZA approval and they're not willing to reduce it, then they still don't have to come back.
Well, if they're not willing to reduce it, then I think they're going to another level. Those numbers you threw out, they're going.
Yeah, they don't have a lot of choices. Yeah, they don't have a lot of choices at that point.
But it's, I just, yeah, I just want to make sure the aspect of it, I don't want to say painted in the corner, but it makes it a very finite choice of whether.
And in terms of, you know, I, looking into something else here, I don't know if we.
These are, struggle getting rid of the big bit though. I would like eliminating the growth, like kind of finding a little better detail with that. You know, I think that's kind of, that is where I would think. I think visually, I think he would like that too. If we stop that, that root short, maybe recreate something with the trim or like, if I can, if you pretend to break up or trim around it. Even bringing the windows more flush would be fine. I agree, I don't recommend the windows come forward, but I wasn't sure if that was still a point. I didn't want to. At that point, you know, we can reduce it by, you know, it's still a little bit.
I almost wonder if you bring the windows forward more and then just kind of bring the detail down, almost where your box is now, all the windows go up to. And maybe just kind of like a little trim there and just pump another element on the left side. And I think that could look really nice. Stop, get short of it.
And then maybe mimic this brick with this hope in case of, or maybe if you would like it for.
I almost wonder if you bring this whole roof, or this whole, I almost wonder if you bring, because you've already kind of detailed some of this out. I almost wonder if you bring this down, like your trim all the way down almost to the ground where it does look, your columns kind of come down. It becomes another element up there on that corner. The roof maybe stops, it doesn't, I guess, one thing I'm having a hard time looking at.
Structure behind that too, in the rooms.
Well, if you pulled the windows forward, it could all come down on the same plane and then you just have to build out your trim piece right there. And that's the only concern I have with saying cut this year, I don't know how it's going to look. If it's going to look, then solving more problems than I am here creating another. But I wonder if you almost brought that down, it would help kind of create almost like another secondary tower element there and help make it a little less massive. He then would maybe do some of that brick, do you want to do the brick detailing or some of the trim off of all there? I wonder, I don't know how we.
Yes, it becomes a logistic issue having you look at something else. So I think the way I'd like to maybe see this goes is to give you your approval. Continue with the sign there, Mr. Wilson said. Almost do a kind of growing faith like, I'm okay with this, sounds like you're okay with this.
I'm okay with it partially because I just, I mean, I put myself in mind of the owner, but I feel like he's still trying to hang on to that Oculus. Oculus, but he's met the west move there before him, so, I mean, to me, it looks like a fair compliment with.
So I, oh, I'm sorry, I just.
Yes, yeah.
So, yeah, maybe it's almost kind of growing on faith of, you know, in my mind, take it back, take a look at it, see if there's anything you could do. I don't necessarily, with three of us being okay with it, I don't want to hold you up a month to come back with one element. And if you, you know, hopefully you actually go back and take a look at it, you come up with something that seems really good and kind of to the, you know, to the intent that he's talking about. You know, we'd almost call probably an administrative final review, although I don't think, I think, I think we're done with our actual architectural consultant's review. I think she's bought off on everything, but as far as I think it's going to go. Just to make sure you don't come back with something like, oh, my God, this guy's crazy. Have them take a look at it. I don't necessarily want to bring it back to the commission. So I'd say it's either that or you kind of want faith that you'll take another look at it. If you come up with something that's brilliant, run it past the office, you know, run it past upstairs, if they're good with it, then go. If you can't come up with something good and it's that, I think at least three out of four of us would probably.
I'm not saying.
He's not going to go.
I'm not saying.
Flip out if he sees it.
No, no, I think there's a detailing piece or some kind of, something that needs to be finished there. And I think, you know, we've talked through a couple of different options, I think if you guys want to do that, I'm okay with it. I think you've come a long way and I appreciate it. There's just, there was just one little piece that just doesn't, a little bit more detail, I think, is ultimately what it amounts to. And I think.
I agree with that. You guys will respect faith, I think we'll look at this, I mean, I'm an architect.
And hopefully it demonstrated.
Yeah, of course, and that's the thing, I don't want to, I don't want to hold this up. I don't want to be the guy that, because I don't think we're definitely, we're not last part of it. It's just come down to how does that get finished or how does it look there?
So I guess maybe the way I'd do the thing is administer approval of final architecture. We're pretty much okay with that, Mr. Redd, if you're okay with letting them take another, if they've got something, run it past you. If in general, I mean, if they propose to put a big giant orange plate over the whole thing, maybe that's not okay. But short of that, if it seems good to you, then we're okay with it. I think, I think we're okay with this plan. So maybe be continuing on the signage thing and a final architectural review administratively. Knowing that that's really the only element we're looking at. And if they don't come up with anything good, then I would say still check in with them to get the final approval. If you're not comfortable with the owner's, like, no, there's no change, okay, then we'll score like this. Either way, see them so that we can have it in the street, okay, if you're okay with that.
I'm fine with that.
If I'm not doing anything too crazy.
No, I think the building department absolutely.
Are you guys okay, is there anything else you got on this?
I think the only, the only thing, that was kind of your motion, I would just send this elimination of those, the white above where the brick detailing is.
What do you call those?
Corners. Above just where the brick detail is, the cornice needs to remain above all other windows, actual windows or, I don't know, if you mean expanded windows. And the brick detailing must remain.
All right, well, let me make a motion to approve final plan, including signage but contingent on BZA approval or reduction in the area. Susan, when you got that card.
So I have final plan including sign.
Contingent on BZA approval for reduction in the square footage. With final architectural review administratively. Give me a nod when we get there. Okay. Including the removal of the cornices above the.
Bricks. Bricks.
Windows. Yeah. I think, I think that's it. I figure if we don't mention anything else, we'll. I think that's, I think that's it. All right, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you guys.
Quickies. When you got the shut in the ground?
It's, it's the man.
Um, I just. Yeah. Really depends on the weather, but it's really getting cold and dry for the whole house. We have a, it's like, literally, you know. So we really need to get this.
Would you bring in one too?
If you're open for this.
Right now. Well, now you're, now you're going to be. I mean, they got to go.
You would have told that, I'm curious. Something like this, oh, you should, yeah, two months.
Conceal like square, like binder, yeah.
You did a good job. I have no idea. Actually, it's true, there are alien, I'm sure there's a lot of discussion about it, I always am, I appreciate it.
Our last issue, miscellaneous thing.
We're going to talk about. Yeah, I was up in the building department three weeks ago or something, signing something. And Susan had a stack of plans that was probably just called. I think it was Justin Min or something like that.
It's a lot of paperwork.
It's a lot of paperwork. And I know Jason's using his computer, which made me bring my tablet, which, man, it was so nice not opening. And I know Jason's using his computer, which made me bring my tablet, which, man, it was so nice not opening all this stuff tonight.
Chairman, if the question is, should we do electronic? I say yes.
But not everybody's, you know, made one day. Do you got an opinion?
I definitely, that's obviously, the big one, especially when they're.
Oh, you do?
Uh, Chairman, I retract my statement.
When we only get, when we get these meals of different things, that's where it becomes difficult. You're looking for your PDF and one sheet change, you gotta go find another PDF that sheet to change.
So how do you handle that?
Well.
Well, no, you need to, the submittals need to be made as a whole.
I was going to say, the only issue that now, that's either falls on the applicant or fortunately you would have to repile PDFs. But I think it.
No, she, she, they should make a, a full re-submitment, Susan. Yeah, it shouldn't be up to Susan to figure out which page they changed.
So if they change one page, are they re-submit the entire thing with just that one page change?
I.
Which.
Yeah, it's electronic.
It's not, it's electronic. It's swapping a page out of our PDF and that's it. I, I think that's, I wouldn't, I would not be in favor of it if we're beginning 10 different packets of information or 10 different emails. Everything, if it's all one submittal for, you know, whoever it is, and it's a revision, it's all completely one up with that.
So would they still submit like one paper copy though?
I think.
I would have to have a paper copy.
Like if I wanted to come up and review something like big like that.
Yeah, it's on file at the building department.
I have to have a paper copy to file away and, yes.
Mr. Shrohan, I know you've got computer issues this past week. What, what's your opinion on this? Would you, I guess, I mean, we could.
I mean, I could always bring the originals down here and send them down there for you guys if you want. I just.
You could go along with it. Now, I wish we had, I wish Mr. Pax is here to get his opinion too. But you, you would be okay with digital? And then if you're really wanting to see something, would you come up?
To the building department.
If you're really wanting to.
Digital make it, I don't know, maybe you do the lines, but can you make more stuff posted on the site?
Everything is posted on the website. A couple of revisions, I think that were last minute or not. Um, but the. A lot of it I scanned, but mostly they send digital copies to me.
I would say, you know, if, if we would do this, that you should definitely require a PDF submittal. They're all capable of making a PDF. And they should give you one.
They'd never give me a hard time.
Yeah, and they should give you one.
They're happy to do the PDF. They don't want to print 13 sets this tall and lug it to some test.
Do we want the 13 copies? That's it. Or do you want me to just email you?
I kind of think.
Steve would like the copies.
Who would?
Right.
Brian?
Yeah, I still want paper.
And that's, and that's good. I mean, yeah, because you.
Didn't have them send it to paper copies.
Maybe just request three card copies.
If I was doing a technical review, I, the opposite, no matter what it is, I print out and I mark it all up. Just like, but I'm not doing that kind of review here, so I don't need to see that. But I think that the distribution or at least the maintenance of it, when you get all these revisions, it could be the difficult part. And I don't want to make more work for you, although adding, updating the PDF and sending out an email with you, still is probably easier than folding a bunch of copies. Put them in envelopes, give them a Chris.
Send it 43 pages through the large format scanner.
Revision one, revision two, you know, second set of copies.
Is it Chris who did it?
Yes. Yes, he laughs about that. And yours too.
Absolutely. If they're going to, if we give PDFs, it would have to be date and revision number, not a PDF situation.
I mean, this is just to see how you guys feel about it. We absolutely don't have to do it. It was just.
What, what do we take maybe for this next month, especially since they're probably going to start submitting stuff already? Why don't we do a dual system for this month? Just, which is, you're almost kind of already doing it. I mean, you've got it up on the website. If you go to the city's website, you go to departments, you go building.
And basically don't even have to email it because it's already up.
Right, you would just maybe let us know when something goes up to that.
Yeah.
And it's a one drive or a, some kind of drive and to download it takes several minutes, it's like this big honking file. I mean, it is on my computer work. It took like three or four minutes just to download the one thing, which is terrible. But maybe do a dual system, still send us hard copies for this upcoming month. But also everybody check out the, maybe set, when you, you know, when you're sending out the packets, usually send us an email saying Chris is bringing him by on Monday or whatever. Say, you know, it's up on the website or send a link to it or something like that to the group. And everybody try it out. Try and pull down the PDF, see if you like it.
See if it works.
Ideally, you're not scanning a bunch of stuff because one, when it loses some of the quality and two, it's probably a pain in the butt.
It is.
It's, yeah, it is, but it's my job. Now, the packet that I sent, sent down for you guys with the agenda and everything, and I, I copied all of the memos for you. Can we take that out? Or do you still want me to?
Stuff for.
That I sent in front of you, yes.
I kind of like having those because that does give me something to take notes on.
Okay.
Write on the page, you know, and Brian's saying something, I can write that landscaping and add.
On his memo?
I write it around.
You write it right on his memo, okay.
So I remember what to say.
So you still want that?
I still like having the, the comments in my hand here.
Okay.
The other thing I was going to say too is I don't need those giant numbers planned. Most communities have gone to half sheets, 11 by 17, so it just saves a lot of room on the table too. If you are looking at paper, for me, I'm fine with 11 by 17.
You're good with 11 by 17? Because I usually tell them 11 by 17, but they still give me the big one.
As long as they're to scale, yeah. And they have the effort in to make sure. Yeah, yeah. To scale.
Okay, to scale. I can have that.
But maybe we just do it as a dual thing and then that gives us next month to talk to Mr. Pax and see if he, I mean, and if he, he wants the paper, then it's him and it's Brian. And whoever from your staff might want.
I think it would probably just be you and myself that would need the hard copies because you could look at the copy that I have or online, you like online.
It's a lead up. We went to hybrid, hybrid systems. Two slightly more seasoned members and they go for paper.
More seasoned?
I mean, more seasoned.
Oh.
But, you know, then at the meeting, you know, when we come to the meeting though, I mean, like Joe, it's an all of you saw, you know, I can bring, start bringing my laptop. And sit right here, we could share.
Yeah, Chairman, that's what I do.
I could drink more.
As long as it's working, yeah. Joe's watching. Netflix, all of you.
What do you think I was watching?
But yeah, I think that could work. I don't know if you've got something you can bring on share, you know, everybody brings their own computer when we sit here with that. If they want to spread out a plan or put something on the board, but man, it would be so nice like tonight, we just did not spread out the big giant plans.
You know, advancing this theory just a little more. Is there a way you could project this on a screen somewhere?
I believe you could put it up on these TVs.
The TVs over there.
You would be in charge of that because I don't know what you want pulled up or anything like that. You would have to set that up, but we could talk to IT about that. But I don't know if that's going to be allowed, only because it's a virtual meeting also. As we're talking right now, there are people watching us live. So depending on what gets pulled up on the TV screen.
Okay, can't see the families that are looking at here. I need to use the.
Yeah, there is a way and it might have to be, I see, I cannot like me looking at my laptop to these things. I could see them saying, okay, well.
No, yeah.
Somebody could bring you a laptop, a city laptop and sit it down here and I could control or Bob could control or somebody.
We could, we have.
That's kind of like we did during the, the virtual meetings and I'd bring up the plans on the screen and I could flip through the things as we're talking. So we didn't have to stare at each other's. It was kind of nice.
Those are good, but they'll just be for the audience.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It doesn't help us.
Right, right.
I think that would be good. So let's, let's maybe try and do a dual system for next month. See what Mr. Pax thinks. If he's on board and everybody thinks that the file works okay, maybe just go to a paperless, at least the big packet.
I'm sure the applicants will be very happy with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Traffic season I produce, so glad to not.
It's so much paperwork. You should see the files.
All right, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, Paul.
Okay. How's it going there?
Month is there?
Bye.
Doing good.
Let me, let me.
See you guys.
See you.